We will begin by introducing Howard County Clerk of the Courts, Kim Wilson.
Good evening. How are you guys tonight? For anyone who doesn't know me, my name is Kim Wilson and I'm the Clerk of Howard County. Part of my responsibilities include, I'm in charge of the election process for Howard County, so I'm here to give you a little information about vote centers and after the debates, show all of you our new voting equipment. The vote center concept was put into place in Indiana in 2007. Three counties, Wayne, Tippecanoe, and Cass County were our pilot counties. Simply put, a vote center is a place where anyone in the county can go and cast their vote. You're no longer constrained to your specific precinct. We purchased our first electronic voting equipment in 1997 and it served Howard County for 19 years. When it was necessary to purchase new equipment, the vote center concept was put into play. So a little over two years ago, with the help of a bipartisan steering committee, our county IT department, the approval of both our county commissioners and county council, this plan was realized. So beginning in May of this year, at our primary, we will be using the vote center concept. For the primary, the vote centers will be open for Election Day only. And then as we move forward to the November general election, we will have vote centers open for eight days prior to the election. We'll have eight vote centers open prior to the election and then on Election Day, we'll have 15 centers open. They'll be open for 12 hours from, I believe it's 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, for eight and a half days prior to the election. Tonight, with the help of our election vendor ESNS and my Chief Deputy Debbie Stewart, I've brought our new voting equipment for you to see. I also at the table have a list of all the centers, their addresses, and a map with their pinpoints, so you can see where they are located throughout the county. You're also welcome to view this information on our county website. And if you have any questions, I would like to answer them after the debate.
Thank you, Kim. We look forward to seeing you. Now we will hear introductions from Republican County Coroner Primary Candidates, Dr. Michelle Hendigus and Dr. Stephen Sealy, if they would like to join me at the front. Both candidates will have three minutes and our timekeeping is by the League of Women Voters. And Dr. Hendigus, we'll let you go first.
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to present to the county my vision and what I hope to accomplish in the coroner's office. But first, I want to share a little bit about myself. I was born in Louisville, Kentucky, and I went to medical school at Indiana University. From there, I graduated from Methodist Hospital in 1997 with a four-year residency in obstetrics and gynecology. Prior to this experience, I worked with the Medical Examiner in Vigo County, where I actually performed autopsies, actually participated in autopsies, well over 50. In fact, it paid for part of my medical school and part of my training. From there, I actually saw all kinds of spectrums of death. I saw murders, suicides, drownings, I saw natural deaths, I saw violent deaths. And it was from that experience that I really developed a passion for medical legal death investigations. But I'd already presented myself to the obstetrics and gynecology tract. From there, and since then, I've delivered over 7,000 babies. That's a lot of birth certificates. I've signed quite a few birth certificates. I understand working nights, being up all night. There was days I was not even home for seven nights. I missed a lot of activities. But it was that woman's event, that family's event, that they needed their physician at that patient's bedside. That was their experience. And oftentimes, just the same with the coroner, that's that family's death experience. It's about their experience and not so much about the coroner's experience. So with my medical background and my medical training, I could take the dynamics of managing a very busy practice. In my practice, I had over 20 employees. I assembled a fantastic team. We had a multimillion-dollar practice where we had to fight with the regulations of healthcare and insurance companies and government regulations and restrictions. So I've managed the team. And I also understand how important it is to assemble a team. In fact, I've had several police officers and EMA professionals actually asked to join my team as coroner. So I've assembled a team that I believe that will take this coroner's position to the next level. And I think to deal with the epidemic of drugs and violence in our community, we have to think outside of the box. The reactivity and just responding to the call is not working. Much like Mothers Against Drunk Driving, if we actually think outside of the box, like Charles Kiesling in Pennsylvania, who said, "Let's call heroin deaths murder and deal with it more proactively." So I admire this professional who's thinking outside of the box. And that's what I hope to do in the city of First, in the county of First. So I ask that you join with me. I think that much like Mothers Against Drunk Driving, we can take this into a proactive stance. Kids respond to visuals and images. And if we create that image and we create that vision of what it's like for the family, what it's like at that death scene investigation, I truly believe we may not be able to save all 30 people that have died per year, but one or two, to spare one parent the grief of having to deal with a lost child. I appreciate your vote on May 3rd. I anticipate doing great things with the coroner's office. One of the things that I will not do is do autopsies, but I understand and I have a certain level of respect and relationships with forensic pathologists, and I'll bring that to the coroner's office. Thank you for your vote.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Stephen Sealy. I'm a Republican candidate for Howard County Coroner. I was raised in Delphi, Indiana, and I've been a resident of Howard County since 1984. At the age of 15, I began working in the funeral service business as an assistant just down the block from my home in Delphi.
Hello, Steve.
How's that? And I obtained a mortuary science degree then in 1982, and I worked at a local mortuary here in Kokomo since that time, until '94, when I returned to school to obtain my doctorate degree. I've been a deputy coroner since 1992 here in Howard County, and there are past coroners Jeff Stout, Brad Bray, and present coroner Jay Price. And since 2005, I've worked for the Howard County Sheriff's Department as a reserve deputy assigned to road patrol. In 2000, the Indiana law changed mandating all coroners and deputy coroners to obtain training and certification in medical legal death investigators and serve as externship also under the direction of a forensic pathologist. I immediately obtained that training and took the board exam and served my externship with the Marion County Coroner's Office in Indianapolis. Since that period, I've continued my education and training in the area of death investigation and crime scenes, and on a yearly basis have obtained well over 350 hours in the advanced training. And over the past 24 years, I've obtained vast experience and have participated in numerous death and crime scene investigations and attended and assisted in many post-mortem examination, also known as autopsies. In the state of Indiana, the official duties of the coroner, of course, are dictated under code. And you must meet these responsibilities. And some of them, of course, are identification of the deceased, determining the cause and manner of death, especially in the areas of violence, casualties, and unexplained suspicious circumstances. There's also other special circumstances like incarceration or certain hospital institutional deaths that the coroner must be involved in. When a death must be investigated, the coroner works with the local law enforcement agency together and they investigate the scene. Under the code, also, it's necessary for an autopsy to be conducted. A pathologist must do that under Indiana code. The Howard County Coroner's Office presently conducts well over 200 investigations a year, death investigations a year in Howard County, and operates on a budget that's controlled by the Howard County Council. My life has always been in service to others and my community as a doctor, funeral director, deputy coroner, and deputy sheriff. What I offer to you, to the citizens of Howard County, is true experience, commitment, and knowledge with compassion. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I ask for your vote on May 3rd.
Thank you very much. Now I would like to invite the Democrat County Council at Large Primary Candidates, Kelly Land and Craig Simon, to join me at the front to introduce themselves. And all of our primary candidates have the red, white, and blue name tags, so that will help identify them for you at the reception as well, too.
Hi, I'm Kelly Land. I'm running to be your next Howard County Council Representative. I've lived in Howard County most of my life. I reside here in Kokomo. I live with my husband and my rambunctious little one-year-old son named Tracy. I recently graduated in 2014 with my master's degree in public affairs. I have always had a passion for government, even before I graduated college, in helping people. I volunteered and served this community basically my whole life. I've done it through volunteering, being in Girl Scouts, working for nonprofits, serving on multiple boards even when I was in high school. I've devoted my life here. I believe that all people have the chance to work hard, earn a living, and be a meaningful part of their society. I currently work for a major university. And through that university, I go and do straight state trainings specifically on people with disabilities and how they can interact with their community, work in their community, and give back to their community. I also serve as a chairperson for the Howard County Young Professionals. I've actually served on that committee before I was an official committee. A group of friends of mine knew how successful Howard County was and how much fun it was. And we wanted to engage young professionals to stay here and to live here and to work here. So we went out and we planned fun events, family-friendly events for them to come. We've been very successful in that. And in the last two years, we've actually joined up with the Howard County Chamber of Commerce. And the last event we had was the 20 Under 40 Awards here in Howard County. And we had over 150 people attend that event. So it's a great program that we have, and I'm truly honored to be a part of that. I also sit on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Kokomo. And with that, I've learned about employment and how to bring business here and what the regulations are for business here in Howard County. Through this capacity of sitting on these boards, it's taught me the social responsibility to enhance our community, creating a community that is inviting to new residents and businesses who will bring new employment here. I will concentrate on making Howard County a friendly and safe environment for all residents. I'll focus on walkability and accessibility, including transportation for the county. I will also focus on fiscal concerns. I've ran over half a million dollar budgets in my past career, and I've also wrote many, many grants. I am dedicated to Howard County and ready to serve this community. I'm asking for your vote on May 3rd. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Craig Simon, and I'm running for County Council at Large. I'm a Howard County native, and currently I serve the community in a couple of different capacities. I'm currently the president of the city of Kokomo's Park Board of Commissioners, helping to improve the parks and thus the general quality of life in the city. And I also work for the Kokomo School Corporation, helping to mentor and educate the students in our community in order to teach them how to be passionate, caring, intelligent leaders. My first introduction to public service was when I was a student ambassador as part of the mayor's delegation to our sister city of Dongyang, China. On that trip, I was able to meet government, school, and business leaders. And I'm glad to say, some of their passion for public service has rubbed off on me. Prior to that trip to China, I was fully set on moving away from this community. I felt that there was a lack of opportunity here. I stayed, but many of my friends have moved away since then. So this is why I'm running for County Council. I believe that we should strive to create opportunity for our ambitious young people, so that they do not leave the community as I almost did. We should strive to attract new talented residents to Howard County. We should strive to adapt and innovate to the changing times rather than simply maintain our current standard of living. In Howard County government, we need visionary leaders who can bring the county into the 21st century. We need to be foresighted. We need to continue to pursue economic development in order to attract new businesses and residents to the county. We also need to pursue quality of life initiatives in order to make Howard County a place where young people want to live. We need to make sure our young talented people do not contribute to the brain drain by moving away like I almost did. Also, I'm running just to get more people involved in public service. I feel that too many people of my generation, and in fact, most people nowadays for some reason, are just simply apathetic. They aren't involved in the community, and that's a problem that needs fixing if we want to ensure that our community continues to improve. I will offer a new kind of leadership, and I will offer a fresh voice to the council. I will work hard for your vote in the coming months. With your support and vote, together we can ensure that Howard County government guarantees a great life for the current generations and the countless ones that follow. Thank you.
I will now introduce the other candidates present, including their name, the party, and the elective position they are seeking. So as I call your name, please stand so that the voters can recognize you. We have with us this evening, running for County Auditor, Republican Martha Lake. County Commissioner, lost my place, sorry. County Commissioner, District 2, Democrat Kevin Summers. We have County Commissioner, District 3, Democrat Joseph Ewing. County Surveyor, Republican Dave Duncan. County Premier, Democrat Edward Foster. County Treasurer, Republican Weston Reed. Greentown Council Ward 1, Republican Kenneth Muma. Greentown Council Ward 1, Democrat Katie Reagan. Greentown Council Ward 3, Democrat Robin Hanlon. We have Judge Superior 1, Democrat Eric May. And Judge Superior 1, Republican William Menjus, sends his regrets. He's out of the country at the moment. We have State Representative, District 30, Democrat Natalie Guest. State Representative, District 30, Republican Mike Karikoff will be joining us shortly. And we have State Representative, District 38, Republican Heath Van Natter, also will be hoping to join us at the reception. So those are all of the candidates that are here with us this evening. Did I miss anyone? Oh, Tyler came in. So Tyler, please stand. We have Tyler Moore, County Commissioner, District 2, Republican.
Brad Bray.
And Brad Bray. And so we have our assistant to check candidates, and obviously, we've missed a couple. My apologies, County Commissioner, District 3, Republican Brad Bray. Is there anyone else? All right. So all of these candidates will be outside in the shared drive after the candidate forum, so you'll have an opportunity to talk with them. I'd like to thank all the primary candidates for being present with us this evening, and we look forward to talking with you. Now I will introduce the candidates participating and running for County Council at Large on the Republican primary ticket. We have Jeff Stout, Jim Papasak, Stan Ortman, and Grace April. Don Wilson, publisher of the Kokomo Perspective, will be the moderator for tonight's event. The League of Women Voters will maintain the timing. We'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight's session. We'd also like to thank the candidates. And it's very important that the voters be able to hear the candidates' positions on issues leading up to the primary election on May 3rd. And now I would like to welcome Perspective publisher, Don Wilson, to the podium.
Thank you very much. And we'll begin with, each candidate does get two minutes on this. We have composed questions... I don't know how to use the microphone. We have composed questions on issues we have identified. Before we present our questions, we would like to ask each of you, what are the top three issues you consider of most importance in this election? And we begin with Jeff. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Before we get to the questions, there is an introduction period. And we'll begin with Jeff.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be able to be here. And also, thank you for you folks for taking the time out to show your interest and your concern for your job. Jeff Stout, I'm 52 years old. I'm a funeral director and I am owner of a funeral business here in Howard County. Get to deal with a lot of families during a lot of difficult times. But I also, in running my business, I also have the great opportunity of working with a lot of different numbers, budgets. And under the Howard County Council, we do deal with a $19 million budget. And in that, I've been able to be part of that team and help take some leadership in that for the last four terms. We've been hit with several challenges, and our team has done a great job, also working with the commissioners and the council, on identifying those different shortfalls and other things with other offices, that we've been able to work and keep the same services and been able to keep the county running on a smooth and equal basis of serving people, even though we have some less money to work with. I'm married to Tammy. We have seven children between us. So I live, I work, I love serving. I serve on the regional ambulance and fire and I love serving my community. And Howard County is a great place to live. There's always things there that you work on from time to time. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Also, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening and thank all of you people for coming this evening. My name is Jim Papasak. My wife Brenda, who we've been married 47 years. And I have one daughter, Lee, and her husband Matt, Rota, who live in Lafayette. And I have two grandsons, the apple of my eye. Now Jeff told how old he was. I'm not going to tell how old I am. But last June, when I went to my daughters for my birthday, a five-year-old grandson greeted me at the door saying, "Grandpa, we cannot put 73 candles on your cake because that would be way too dangerous." So I guess when your birthday cake becomes a fire hazard, that maybe you are getting old. I'm a graduate of Kokomo High School and Indiana University here in Kokomo with a degree in business. I've been on the council. I started out my public career as a city councilman. I was elected in 1971 to the city council and served two terms there before I moved out to the Greentown area, where I have served eight terms and am seeking my ninth term. I think I also served on the County Plan Commission and have been the president of the Mount County Plan Commission since 1982. Couldn't remember why I served. My professional life, I worked in the financial industry. So I've retired as president and CEO of Haynes Community Federal Credit Union. I'm used to working with figures and budgets and have done that all my life. So I just ask for your support on May 3rd, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Stan Ortman.
Good evening and thank you for everybody that's made this possible and for all of you attending this evening. I am a lifelong resident of Howard County. I went to Northwestern High School. Graduated with a degree in economics from Purdue University. My main partner, at 42 years, is sitting in the audience. And she is a mother of our two daughters. And we have two grandsons, and my daughters and their husbands and grandsons. And also, my three granddogs reside in the Cincinnati area. Very proud of them. I am a retired financial investments advisor. I currently work as a farm manager, involved in that very deeply. I served two terms on Northwestern School Board. At the time, the total budget was under $10 million. We went through a bond issue without raising taxes. We did an expansion at the school at that time. Served on the library board. We avoided the bond issue there. We redid the downtown library, which I think is a great asset to the community. I was involved in the startup in all of Jakarta. I'm on the Solid Waste District Board. So most of my adult life has been involved with numbers and figures and also my professional life, dealing with personal finances of individuals and also other organizations. So it's been a joy working with these gentlemen for the past four terms on the county council. And I look forward to another one if the county so decides. So I look forward to your support on May 3rd, and thank you.
Before I start, I've never done this before, so I was a little nervous about coming here, which made my husband very happy because when I'm nervous, I clean and my house is dust. I wrote out what I was going to say, just in case. But basically, my name is Grace April. I hold a bachelor's degree in agriculture, which I received in 1980 from Delaware Valley University in Doylestown, Pennsylvania. Along with my husband, Timothy, I run a small 200-acre family farm and dairy in the eastern part of Howard County. We purchased this in 1989. We had a little bit of a struggle because it's easy to imagine all of the different things you need to get to build up a dairy, to build up a farm. Took about eight or nine years of tight budgeting, buying a lot of used things, and learning quickly how to fix them. The agribusiness is now up and running. And while we were creating this small business, agribusiness, we were blessed with three wonderful children, who are now all grown. Our small diversified farm operation really was an eye-opener to financial issues. So I learned valuable firsthand lessons of just how to be successful in this agribusiness. This year in Howard County, there's three at-large county council seats. I would like to occupy one of them. After much thought, much prayer, and research into the specific details and duties of this position, I'm confident that I would be a valuable asset to the seven-member council. I've never done anything on my own, always worked with people as far as business-related things. So as with any business, financial discipline is an extremely important aspect. On our dairy, income changes routinely either up or down every 30 days. Other than quality bonuses and premiums, we have little control... Oh, I'm sorry. I went with... See, I'm not used to this. I'm just going to finish up and say, budgeting, I'm very good at budgeting. Keeping a tight rein on expected as well as unexpected expenses. I have a strong passion for people, a willingness to serve. And I am so sorry I went over the time. I wasn't even watching you. I'm so sorry.
Okay. We have composed questions on issues we have identified. Before we present our questions, we would like to ask each of you, what are the top three issues that you consider of most importance in this election? And we'll begin with Judge Stout. Two minutes, all of you.
One of the three things, there's no doubt that probably the top priority on my list would be, as the circuit breakers have kicked in and also with annexation, the county still, every year, deals with a little less money coming in statewide from the circuit breakers and also locally from our annexation. And we've taken a real strong lead on that to... And with the help of the employees and also the office holders, it's been a great team of coming in and making all that work and still have the same services, the same office, and still have five days a week that all those offices are all being served. The other part that I would dig into would also be on state mandates. As we get things from different offices, whether it be prosecutor, public defender, anything from the courts, we do... anything from the courts, we do have to deal with some of that, and that comes budgetary because the mandate is, comes up from the state, and we have to turn around and deal with that on the dollars, and even though we have no choice to turn it down or to accept it. And then being able to make sure that we have things for the quality of life. Some of the projects and things that we've got going, commissioners have set up some budgetary items and some things that the council should be behind both in doing our attrition through some of the offices to also make up some of that difference, and also in the county, in the realm of life, we also have some projects that are in the help fund that will also be very appetizing to people to stay or live in Kokomo.
Thank you. James?
All right, my top three are pretty similar to Jeff's. Number one is, right now the county has no debt, and we need to keep that that way. We, as a county, have lived within our means fiscally, and we need to keep that up. Of the $19 million general fund, 70% of that goes to the criminal justice system, which includes the courts, except for the judge's salary, sheriff's department, the jail, criminal justice, whichever you wish to call it, and juvenile chemist center. So those take a good chunk of the 19 million, and we need to be able to spread the other amounts out among the office holders to make sure that they have the equipment they need, the funds that they need to run their office and provide the excellent service that they have provided for a number of years. Our county is one of the best, if not the best, in the state of Indiana. All the time, our different department heads and elected officials have other counties coming to us to find out how we do things, how we're able to get so much done. And the other thing, as Jeff had mentioned, the shrinking revenue because of the property caps, the mandates, annexation, those are a challenge to us. We started, we've worked on addressing them and are addressing them. The attrition ordinance, which I'm sure we'll get into here a little later on, is a big step in that direction of keeping the workforce at a level that we can provide the services while at the same time saving the county money. Thank you.
Stan Ortmann?
Couldn't have said it better myself. That's the advantage of going third. One thing, Howard County government works together as a team, and we have done this through the commissioners, all the office holders, and the employees. We have continually increased our cash balances. The council's position is we're keepers of the till and we allocate the funds. So one of the primary issues that we deal with every year is how do we responsibly allocate the funds that we're given, and we do that during the budget session. Both these gentlemen, the mandated, they related to the mandated core services. We have kept our mandated core services at a very high level. Howard County works, and Howard County government's position is to let the other government entities do what they are supposed to be doing. So we provide the foundation for that, and by all measures, we have been successful with that. Our cash balances have continually gone up. Our last three years, we have had over a million-dollar under-budget performance. Okay? So I think everything else, these gentlemen already touched on, so, you know. Like I said, we work together, and I'll let Kate rest my time with Grace. Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Going to try to practice a little brevity here. The three issues, I've researched this, I've talked to several of these men here, different county council members that aren't here. It seems to me the rainy day fund would need to be replenished, and it was my understanding that the Chrysler settlement is where that money came from. The new radios that the police department will receive are probably going to cost between $2 million to maybe $5 million, and so that's one area we'd need to concentrate on. Again, I agree with these three gentlemen, the annexation of Kokomo, I believe it was about a $2 million loss, so we'll need to figure out how to get that back. From what I'm understanding, the council duties, financing and budgeting, the amount of revenue, source of revenue, allocation, and how it's expended would be one area where we could focus to get some extra money. There's something called a CEDIT, which is County Economic Development Income Tax. When that comes in, I believe 75% more or less would be for the commissioners' use where they see fit, but 25% could perhaps be saved to put back into the rainy day fund. I see I'm at 30 seconds, so I'm going to finish up here, and I thank you.
Next question. James, if you are elected, tell how, tell us how you will, yourself, how you will, excuse me, how you will see yourself building and maintaining a relationship with the townships and municipalities?
Well, I, I think we've had a fairly decent relationship with them. There have been some bumps in the roads, but I think we work on things together that we can work on and continue to try to look at joint efforts where we can help each other out. We've, I think, Roushville, one of the things we've done in Roushville is when they were rebuilding the interurban station to do, for the, as a museum, that the commissioners, along with the council, asked them to see what funding they could find, and they found plenty, found a good amount, but then the county also kicked in some money to help with that. And I think the same thing with some of the others. We've helped with the infrastructure and different things, and I think just good common sense. I think a lot of times that gets put by the wayside, and I think you just work together and do what's best for everybody.
Stan?
We have done several joint projects with different entities. When we go into those, we have to make sure that we do have the funding available, and it cannot just be a one-time deal and put us in an advantageous position. So we are part of this community. A lot of the county duties are different from what the townships and municipalities are. We must provide the core services. Then if we have excess funds, we can go into joint victories, which we have on many occasions, roads, trails, you know, there are many. And we just finished what I would say would be a major ditching project in both ends of the county, and very quickly, that was at 1.2 million. It was supposed to take five years to get it done. We got it done in one. It was supposed to take five years to pay for it. We got it done in three. So a 40% discount, five years of service, which people didn't think they would have when that came about. We're just in the process of getting that money back. That's going to, that could help pay for a radio project. It's a cash balance that we'll have that we didn't anticipate. So first time it was ever done to state, as far as I'm, I think, so I don't see an issue there. We'll just continue on as we have and make it successful. That's what we've been doing.
Grace?
Thank you. As an outsider, I do have a different view on one item that I heard at the Republican Women's Club. Grant money was used for a two-stage drainage ditch on the eastern end of Howard County. Grant money is free money, didn't have to come out of the county budget. I think that's one way that the county employees had a relationship there. And I'm sorry I keep saying, but it's my nerves. Basically, roads, drainage, law enforcement, these are things that the county council is responsible for, and that touches all different areas throughout the county. Recently, I went to Sedalia to get a farm park, and I drove through the, since I'm from the eastern end of Howard County, I drove through the whole entire county, and I saw how diverse it is. And there's an awful lot of good stuff that I saw that I hadn't seen before. Kokomo is fantastic. In the past few years, I think there's been a good relationship between the city government and the county government, and the things that are new there, and just, it just looks like the quality of life is saying, "Come, live here, start a small business." So I guess, I think the relationship is good with, oh, it's my nerves again, I'm sorry. I'm just finished.
Jeff?
Not used to this.
Couple things come to mind. I was able to be part of the team and take some leadership. I know Councilman Ortmann, Commissioner Lyman, and all you guys have been part of the city. We helped bring the trail into the north side there with some funding so that they could finish that on through. Noticing that the county teamed up, and we were able to finish on out on Morgan Street so that FedEx could come in there. That brought 30 more jobs in there with that, with the county and the city doing that part. And then I know that we did work with Roushville and Greentown on a couple of projects that they had, that we were able to help diversify some money out there to help them get jump-started and do that, and then get some of that back in to do that. So that's three or four things there that we've teamed up with both the other communities, municipalities there to do that.
Jeff, do you feel you have a good relationship with the city?
With that, I set aside, they're going to have some differences, we're going to have some differences, but we still need to take the best interest in that community, in the communication and working with that. Putting any differences aside, we have to do what's best with that, and I feel like that no matter what the situation was, we could sit down and work with them on any things.
Jim?
I would say we have a good working relationship, not a great one. I think there's room for improvement there on both sides. I think what we need to do is, again, use common sense and do what is best for the taxpayers.
Stan?
Personally, I have a very good relationship with all the city councilmen and the mayor that I've come in contact with, and the commissioners have more of the business side of it. The council is more, which by statute, we're the keepers of the till and the bean counters. So we work in conjunction with the commissioners on city, city projects, and I think the county has participated pretty significantly. So I would say, yeah, if you look at the progress we've made, we do have a good relationship. We may have disagreements, but hey, I have those with myself, so.
Grace, as an outsider looking in, do you see the relationship between the two entities?
As previously stated, I think we have a good relationship between the county and the city of Kokomo. I see a lot of projects that are shared, and it seems to be the goal, quality of life, job employment, it seems to me that that's moving in the right direction, and I'd like to help continue that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stan, what is the Howard County Reserve? What should the reserve amount be?
Are you talking deputies or money? You're talking, you're talking to the budget, which we have control over, is that correct?
That's why you're here.
Our reserve, okay. Our cash, our cash balance is, I believe, some-
I would ask you fair.
Okay, you said reserve, we have-
Want me to repeat it?
No, I've got it. End of the year good enough? $12 million. We rank the top 10% of the state. What should the amount be? Ideally, I look at the solid waste district, we want to keep at least 50% of our budget. So that was, you're talking in the neighborhood of nine and a half, eight to 10 million roughly is what it should be, and if we have to dip below that to pay for P-25 and voting machines, work release center is on the horizon. I'm prepared to go along if we have to do that, but there will also be a process in place to get it replaced.
Grace, what do you think the reserve should be?
I don't have a clue.
Thank you. Jeff?
The end of the year, encumbrances and some things that come in that are not used that the office holders have done, or will, that kind of beefs that up, and then we get started again and start paying bills and start doing the, knowing that we're gearing up for, hopefully we're going to get on, taxes are paid May 10th, and sometime in June then, Martha's going to start making these distributions. So it looks like it's high by the end of the year for that $12 million. I really think around the $8 million mark is what is nice and comfortable because it doesn't take long through two pay cycles and some bill paying for that to go in again less than half.
Thank you. Grace, Governor Pence recently signed into law Senate Bill 308, which lowers taxes on farmland. While farmers will see their burden lowered, the county will likely experience a loss in tax revenue. How do you suggest this be resolved?
Well, first I'd like to tell you that since 2007, I believe it was, when the laws were changed, on our small farm, there's been a 63% increase in property taxes. We're not a big grain farm, so I don't know how others prepare for that, but we were well prepared because, as I stated before, unexpected expenditures are common on a small dairy farm. Our revenue changes on a monthly basis. There are different options, and until I'm actually in position of the county council, working with six other members, part of a team, I wouldn't know the precise answer. However, as a small agribusiness, things are changing in agriculture. You've got farmers markets, you've got small businesses, honey, maple syrup. Most small farmers don't just do one thing, they diversify. So my answer would be diversification of income, and there are a potload of ideas out there.
Jeff?
I think farming is one of the only businesses where the price is set, and they have to accept what's set or what the market is. In that, having those cash balances up, and I want to see these farmers make it. I want to see these farmers be able to succeed in lowering that since at grain prices, you can get on there, grain prices are as low as they've been in many, many years. This, I know that's a way to try to help and also keep our farm community within our community here in our county. And farm ground is very valuable, and as we see it fluctuate, the, the way that the governor, I think he's trying to make it, very valuable for the farmer to make it, and I support that wholeheartedly. And I know that puts a little bit of struggle on us as trying to do a budget, but also not, not being able to have the farmer there to see some of that ground go away would be very detrimental to our county.
Jim?
I think that's going to be one of the major issues that's going to be facing us again at budget time, is our revenue continues to shrink. I think, not to pass a buck, but I think the state legislature needs to look at the tax structuring thing and get it more even. No one begrudges the farm, the tax breaks the farmers are getting, and as Jeff stated, that, you know, Howard County is not only a manufacturing county, it is a farming county. We look at county government, and I think we have to look inside ourselves. And again, I think this attrition ordinance that we just recently passed is going to save, over the next two to three years, $2 million. It will probably reduce the workforce through attrition, 20 to 25 people. Already, since January, when this ordinance was put into effect, we have saved the county general fund approximately $200,000. I think we're just going to have to continue to look at everything and figure out different ways within the county to save money.
Stan?
Repeat the question, please.
Governor Pence recently signed into law Senate Bill 308, which lowers taxes- Governor Pence recently signed into law Senate Bill 308, which lowers taxes on farmland. While farmers will see their burden lowered, the county will likely experience a loss in tax revenue. How do you suggest this be resolved, replaced?
Okay. Strictly dealing with the revenue replacement part of it. I've had discussion with legislators, and we have many parcels in the county that are paying zero property taxes. I've had individuals come to me saying, "My house taxes really are not high enough for the services that I receive." So, it affects county government, it affects the schools, it's gonna affect the city, this reduction, well, the city not too much, but a little bit. So, I think as a responsible citizen, we should all partake in the cost of local government. I believe that every parcel should have a minimum tax on that, and that could, whether we want the legislator to do it, or whether we do it with local rule, either way, that would be my, that would be one alternative to replacing our lost revenue, is the people are paying no taxes, at least pay a little bit.
Thank you. Jeff, as a follow-up to question two, the attrition plan has been a topic of conversation lately within the council. There's split votes being delivered in regards to the restructuring of Superior Court II. How will the losses from Senate Bill 308 affect the attrition plan? How much responsibility do you believe department heads should have when deciding how to structure their workforce?
For ones of you out there who may not know about the attrition plan, it's where somebody retires, quits, the office decides to come to the commissioners and the council and say, "Hey, I'm not gonna replace that person." It's gonna save $30,000 a year, and in that, we're gonna give 15% back to that office to try to perform those services, to get that without hiring another person, which that's where Councilman Papasak was talking about, our $200,000 savings so far. In that, there's no doubt with the lower property taxes, that that could be an effect to a degree of making up the difference in the law, that we may have to use some of that, but I am really big on this attrition plan. These two gentlemen here sat on that committee, I know Commissioner Wyman, and I think it's a great plan, and I think the plan is one way to attack that, to build up some more money, to make up the difference for the farmers to do that, and I'm all for it, to say that.
Thank you. Jim?
Again, I think this is, is, the attrition thing, is it's a new ordinance. We knew there'd be some bumps in the road, and it would've been nice if maybe the first three or four office holders that came to us, it was a real smooth thing. It turned out it was, probably the worst-case scenario in each, each of the first two or three that came. I think the, the office holders, the incentive is for, if the office holders can restructure their office, that they get to get the 15%, they also then can reallocate that among the workers, and, you know, county government for years has always been, everybody gets the same. Well, you know, that's, that's in the past, but you have to look at the jobs individuals do and reward the individuals that are doing the work. The council has the ultimate responsibility of setting the wages and the number of employees. We are going to alter that a little bit by giving the office holders a little more say in how their office is structured. Hopefully, that'll save some money, but I think ultimately, again, the reduction in revenue, we're gonna have to look at the state to look at the taxing structure and make some adjustments there.
Stan?
You mentioned the Superior Two issue. That was the perfect storm of everything that could go wrong, did. We got through that. That was really a very minor issue in the grand scheme of things. We're into this program less than four months, and we have achieved about $200,000 savings. I don't think we will continue at that rate, but it's highly successful. We need to tweak a few things, but we have come to a resolution on it, and so we're moving forward. It's something that we hadn't done in the past. We are changing things, we're trying to get, we're just, we are changing, making improvements, and we're looking at productivity, and I got to thinking about it. Now, maybe if I need a skilled tradesman, the guy I pay $100 or $150 an hour may be less expensive than the guy that comes and does it for 50 bucks an hour. So, I think this is where we're looking at also. We've talked about higher productivity. If our people are higher productive than the person next to them, they deserve to be rewarded. That's an incentive. So, as we go forward, I thoroughly believe that we will continue making progress on this, as we've done the first four months.
Grace?
As an outsider, I watched this unfold in the newspapers, so I only had one side of the story, but I made some phone calls, particularly when there were some bumps in the road that I saw, and I found out why, and I think it's a great example of democracy in America, because, you know, our founding fathers, they made Congress everything to take time to be slow. Some people say, "Oh, why can't they figure this out fast?" And I was proud to see the council take their time on this issue, and I think attrition is a great plan, and I do think the employees should be talked to about this for their ideas. The more people are involved, people who pay taxes, people who work for the county, the more ideas can be thrown around. I remember Tuesday, Jeff said something about, "When there's a problem, it's a challenge," and sometimes he'll wake up in the middle of the night, and it's great when you can say, "Aha, look, here's an idea." So, yes, the people should be involved.
Can I say something else?
Sure.
I think part of your question, Don, also was, what authority do we give to these office holders? And I think Superior Two was one, where just the judge had it worked out between those three employees, and I say, I say we give them that authority, let them diversify those funds. We've elected them into that position, we've put them in there to trust them, and so I kinda wanted to add that part of the last part of his question about that, that we do give that. They know how they're working, they're, they know how, and they would have them there as employees and not employees.
Thank you. All right, we got about five minutes left. Let me just split that up with closing statements. Grace, we'll let you go first, we'll go in reverse order.
I never got to finish my opening statement, should I start there? And I do apologize for being nervous. I'm not nervous right now, but let me tell you, when I started, everything went fuzzy, and I couldn't tell you what my name was if you asked me, so. Again, agribusiness, that's what I do. I think I can bring diversity to this group of men, not in my gender, but in my agricultural background. Budgeting is so important in what I do. You have to keep a tight rein, you never know what's gonna happen, so it's not important, I mean, it's essential for survival. Agribusiness is changing, like I've said before, and instead of thinking only of bringing large companies in or factories in with lots of jobs, let's also think about retaining the businesses we have here. We can add one employee here, or two part-time employees there, and in the ag business today, it's very simple, there are lots of ideas. I've mentioned before, agriculture in the United States today is changing, sustainability, green, cover crops, small farmers markets type businesses, there's a huge opportunity there to retain businesses and strengthen the ones we have, as well as marketing our factories, our business-type people, and I have 30 seconds, so, I just wanna thank you. This was quite an experience, and please remember to go out and vote May 3rd, it's extremely important, it's your duty, it's not just a privilege, it's your duty. Thank you.
Stan?
Again, thank everybody for coming out here to this forum. This is so untypical, the typical council meeting that we have. There's about five, six, seven times the number of people out there than we normally see, so, this is not what we're used to. We are the bean counters, we are the keepers of the till. If you look at our track record, I'm very proud of it, and that goes back to the other office holders and employees, fellow councilmen, we work together. We will continue to do that. I'm gonna ask that you vote for the best three in the primary, and then you do the same thing in the fall, and hopefully I'll be one of them. And if not, we move forward. So, I look forward to a great future in Howard County, we've got it, we've left, we've left the foundation, the foundation is there. When I was on the council, the people prior to us gave us the tools we needed to succeed what we've done over the past few years, and that is our job to do for the people that follow us. Again, thank you for coming, and I really appreciate it.
Jim?
Once again, thank you for coming. I think as both Stan and Jeff have stated, we, not only us three up here, but the council as a whole works as a team, especially at budgeting time. We have, we have our differences, but we make it work. They usually refer to me as the keeper of the calculator, because I always have a calculator in front of me doing the addition and subtraction to see how much we're either increasing or decreasing the budget, but it's, it is a team effort. The county elected officials, department heads and employees have done a great job, because we did underspend the budget in 2015 by roughly $1 million. That was $1 million that we were able to keep in the general fund that was not expanded. We need to keep doing things like that, look at innovative things like the attrition ordinance, and just keep working. The revenue, when the county, the employment is higher in the county and the city, our revenue increases because of the tax collection, so, once again, thank you for coming, and again, as the others said, please remember to vote on May the 3rd.
Jeff?
I echo the thank you to all the groups, your attendance tonight. We know that we have several challenges ahead of us, anything from annexation, circuit breakers, radio system, and the everyday order of business as we go through it. I am ready to handle those. We've continued, we've been proactive in many areas there, taken some real leadership roles in that. The county is in great standing with both cash balances. I love what I do with this council. When I wake up every day and survey, I appreciate where I'm at in life and the service, that's all I've ever done. We take so much pride in that, but yet, in the pride, we have to really work at it, and you never get comfortable. You continue to work, find ways, be proactive, and take, know that you have to be ready to attack or to work on the next project, or the thing that may come before the council. Things have worked well, several sessions that we've been at. I ask for your vote on May the 3rd, and with the protecting your tax dollar, I pay taxes, I've raised my family here, it's a great place to raise a family, so with all those in, I ask, in there that I would do and look and have a proven record, ask for your vote May 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, thank you, audience, and we have a reception that begins now. Thank you all.